Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our interview tonight with Jen Kagawata, candidate for County Council District Two. First, a little bit about Huli Pak. Huli Pak was birthed from a shared drive to rework our system by seeking Ina-based equity-focused leadership for our Hawaii Island community. Now more than ever, we need leaders who are willing to circle back to our roots and instill real change in our community from Kona to Ka'au to Hilo to Havi. The time is now to huli the system. Conducting our interviews tonight are Hannah Hartman and Christine Kubat. Christine, our first question, please.
Okay, the first question has to do with how county government functions. Like other levels of government, it has branches. And the question is which of our county government branches should be most directly involved in setting policy?
All right, thanks for the question. Yeah, well, the county council should be the most involved in setting policy because the county council people are the people that are supposed to be writing the policy. So similar to the federal government, county council is more like the Congress and the executive branch, the, you know, like the president, the mayor is more like the president. And then, of course, we have the judicial branch as well. But yeah, so should be is the council. Right now, it seems like things are a little out of balance. Like, we have a very strong mayor position, and that means the mayor gets to make a lot of important decisions that while they don't necessarily set original policy, they do often get to decide how things actually work for the people of our county. And so I think I would like to see a little more balance come into play there. I know there have been a couple of things proposed recently at the county council level to try to get that balance. And those were not maybe the right exact things to do, but I think it's good to keep looking and see if, you know. I know we had talked about, you know, the possibility of doing a managing director, something like that, that would maybe take some of the administrative duties off the mayor's hands and be a more direct position that is hired by the county council, actually, the managing director that's hired by the county council. So anyway, I think that that's probably a better way we want to go. We don't want to go, you know, like all the power to the county council, but we do want to be a little more balanced so that we can do the work for the people. It's always good to have those checks and balances. So that way, if you have someone really good, you know, that keep working, and if you have someone who's maybe not doing so great for the community, you have a way to balance those. So I hope I answered your question.
Yes, you did. Thank you.
My question to you is foregoing the processes currently in place to prevent damage to the natural environment, historic properties, and burial sites as a way to decrease development costs and make housing more affordable is an idea promoted by many developers and the construction industry. Do you support this regulatory shift? If so, why?
No, I don't, because those are extremely important things for our Ina, for our people and for the culture here. And so I don't think that we should shift away from them. I think we, that's, you know, some of what makes things special here in our state and on our island. And I think we should continue with those things. Can some things be streamlined in the process for development that might help people, you know, get their homes built more quickly? Yes, but not at the expense of the environment and our community. So yeah, I definitely think those should be kept in place.
Okay, I guess it's back to me. What are affordable housing credits? And how do you see them being used or possibly abused by developers?
Yeah, well, obviously, this has been in the news lately and actually had been talking about this with a couple of people before it even got in the news, just like, what's going on with this housing credits thing? And should we be looking into it? Because it seems like what happens is developers have kind of an out for building affordable housing, and they get to build these like fancy, expensive properties that get sold to visitors and people who want to have vacation properties that can spend, can afford to spend a lot of money here. And then oftentimes, what happens is the credits don't end up getting used, they end up getting traded and sold. And the affordable housing doesn't actually get built. So it's a real problem. The biggest problem right now, as I see it, is that we don't know who has the credits, how many are out there. We just don't even know what's out there. But like I said, I really, in general, don't like the system, the way it is. It's possible that it could become a more functioning system if we had better guidelines for how to use them and stronger enforcement on making sure that the affordable housing actually gets built. But the way it is now does not seem like it's a very good process. So I'm glad that there's going to be an audit on this process and there's an investigation going on. So I think, you know, I was really happy to see council member Puleke Naba put forward and was passed idea to do, you know, looking into this on the county council level, even though there's an ongoing investigation. So we're going to have two groups of people looking at this system right now. And hopefully, we'll come up with some good ideas about what we can do going forward to make sure that we get the affordable housing that we're promised built in our county.
Thank you.
Should the prior ban on single-use plastic containers and restaurants and plastic shopping bags be reinstated?
Yes, definitely. I think, you know, luckily, it wasn't a big uptake. I don't think, I mean, just from what I personally saw, I didn't see a big uptake during COVID when, you know, that was relaxed. But we should definitely reinstate it. I mean, people worked very hard to get that instated in the first place, and I think it's really important. We are an island. We just don't have places for this stuff to go. We really need to make sure that, you know, and I know some people really like to talk a lot about recycling, and recycling can be important, but really stopping use of plastics is a much better place to impact our community and our environment. So I'd like to see a little more emphasis there. Even though I know recycling makes people feel better, it doesn't necessarily always have a big impact on our environment. And Christine knows all this way better than I do.
So what will you do if elected to develop our island's capacity for processing compostable substitutes to single-use plastics?
So I mean, overall, I think looking at our waste and how we do recycling and how we do usage, I think we kind of need an overhaul. And some of that has to do with looking at smaller. I'd like to see more and smaller facilities around our island as opposed to one or two large facilities where then we truck stuff over the island and we, you know, have to figure out how to do waste management on a very large scale. A lot of the new innovative ideas and resources coming out, talk about doing smaller things where we can really manage our waste better. And I also think that we can then be a little more sensitive to our different communities around the island and what the needs are. And if, you know, in Kailua Kona, they're maybe not really into composting, but they're willing to pay a higher fee to, you know, do something, maybe they can, you know, settle for a project that does that. Whereas on the Hamakua coast, if they really want compost, good compost for their gardens, and they want to look at that, and they don't want to have a higher fee, you know, they can figure out how to do it that way. I think we need to be a little more sensitive to managing our waste and not just a one-size-fits-all, and also not just a huge one or two waste management systems on our island.
Thank you.
Do you agree with Mayor Ross's decision to suspend Community Development Plan Action Committee activities?
Absolutely not. In fact, one of the things I was campaigning on before he did this was Hilo has not had a campaign action committee. And so one of my campaign goals was to make sure that Hilo was added to the list of communities that have a campaign, have a community action committee. And with this decision, now we have so much little, so much less civic engagement. And I think it's just, you know, it's very disappointing to see that happen. We need more civic engagement, not less. We need more involvement of more people getting involved and saying what's going on in our county, not fewer people. If there were problems with the way different committees were working or being handled, we should address those based on, you know, what's happening. But I know there are very successful ones that were going on. For instance, since I work in the District One office, I know the Hamakua Coast, the Hamakua group was doing a lot of really good work, important work. And so, yeah, like I said, I really wanted to add to the system, not do away with the system. And I know there was, you know, we lost one staff person at the planning department who was personing the different committees, but I I think that that could have been dealt with in a different way than just doing away with the committee. So I hope that we, as going forward, and this is somewhere where county council can have a big impact, right? If we go into our budget system and say, this is really important to us, and we say, this is a value that our community has and needs, then in our budgeting process, we budget for a person in, you know, to staff these things if we want to see it happen. And so that's what I would want to do, is figure out how to do that.
Thank you.
On your website, you state that you want to use tax policy, property, business, tax, or fees to make progress on housing and other issues. Please tell us specifically how you would do this.
Sure. There are lots of ways that I think we can make smaller changes that can really impact things. But there are also some bigger things. So smaller things, for instance, one of the tax, real estate tax categories that we collect taxes on includes both apartment buildings and timeshare places into one thing. So if we want timeshares, for instance, to pay their fair share, we have to raise taxes on apartment buildings that often service low and middle-income families and people. So I would like to see those pulled out and so that they're not in the same category so that we can appropriately tax them for what the need is. The timeshares, I believe, need to go in with hotels and other resort-type of properties and apartments to be separate from that. So another thing, fair tax policies, just in general, I think there are people who can pay their fair share a little more so that people who are struggling can get a little bit more of a break. And I like the saying of, you know, everyone must suffer a little so that nobody suffers a lot. And I think that that is a very true thing when it comes to tax policy. Not everybody agrees with that, and it will take political will and standing up for good values to make that happen. But that's something that I would like to see for sure.
As a council member, you will be in a position to champion certain issues. And I want to make sure you really focus on that word champion. Okay, you're going to be out there, you're going to be like, come on, we can do this. So which, out of all the issues we face, will you champion?
Well, that's true. There's a lot of issues that I want to work on. And there's a lot of issues that I want to work on in collaboration with other council members and with the whole council. But the things that I want to champion have to do with working families mainly. You know, as a, when I was a mom, a young mom with two young children, looking for a job, I really looked at different things than I look at now. And some of those things that were important to me were flexibility in the job. Did I have childcare that I could rely on so I could work, things like that? So to me, those are extremely important. I know we have tons of vacancies at the county level for positions. And I feel like we're leaving a large portion of potential workers out because we don't have policies that are flexible and allow all people to apply for those positions. So things like, you know, being able to schedule your work hours so that you can come in after you drop your children off at school, things like that. Right now, everybody comes in at the same time, leaves at the same time. We don't really have that flexibility. Other things, being able to use your sick leave to take care of a sick child or a sick parent, I think should be something that we look at. And those kind of policies, I think, would allow more people to apply for and be employed at the county level and probably in lots of other types of jobs too. We talk about our economy, and a lot of people want to find that next new hot, you know, thing to bring to our island to give us lots of jobs. And for me, we have tons of jobs on this island that need filling. Not only the county jobs, but we need teachers, we need doctors, we need nurses. We need all these people. We need healthcare workers, we need mental health, you know, professionals. But the problem is, these jobs are not necessarily jobs that people can take, go home, pay their bills, and stay in Hawaii. So if we can make those jobs good jobs where people can afford to pay their bills and stay here, then I feel like we can fill those jobs and our community will be better for it. Right now, we're really struggling with a lack of workers in those positions, so.
Thank you. Quick follow-up question. So what sectors of the community do you see joining you to champion these kind of issues?
Yeah, good question. So as some of you may know, I've been involved in, I've been the island-wide coordinator for the Women's March for the past five years. And I've made a lot of really good connections over that time with lots of community groups, but obviously primarily with women. I feel like that's a huge group of people, I mean, half the island that will, that will want to see a lot of these policies enacted. Also, in that time, you know, made lots of connections by supporting other groups, maybe not taking the lead necessarily, but really supporting, being an ally to other groups. And I feel like I've developed relationships with those groups, be it LGBTQ Pride, or Black Lives Matter, or abortion rights, or whatever it is. We've supported those groups in their policies that they want to see put through and their actions. I also, you know, have, you know, had good relationships with a lot of public school teachers and people that work in the schools. And I'm just sad that the teachers' union doesn't endorse county council races. But, but yeah, so those are some of the groups that I have. And then I've been lucky enough to, you know, develop relationships with the Sierra Club, Planned Parenthood, several of the unions. And, you know, we'll be looking to those groups, you know, to back things around working families and around things that really help young families, women, families with children, which is what I want to champion.
Thank you.
Please share your understanding of the public trust doctrine.
Share my understanding? Hmm, okay. Well, I think it's an amazing thing that our state has that we really care about, that there are water rights, land rights, things that that are not privately owned but are part of the public trust. I've been lucky enough to work, recently, I worked on a resolution to do a punk, working with the punk system to help get, you know, a management of one of our local organizations to really be able to manage for the public good a whole swath of area in Hamakua, Huimau, which I'm super excited about. And I hope can become something that other, we can do around the island even more. And I know that we've already been asked by other counties for some information about how we're doing this. So I hope that we can see more of that. But I think it's really important that, you know, we we steward the land, we steward the water, and we do take it seriously.
So how will it apply to the decisions that you make as a councilperson?
Yeah, well, so going back to things like the decisions around the punk funding, I think is a huge one because we do see those fairly often. And sometimes it's for land leases or actually acquiring land to make sure that those can be held in public trust. And sometimes it's more on the management side. So making sure that we can fund an organization to manage the land. And both those things are important. Sometimes in the past, we haven't been doing so well with the management side. We might acquire land, but then it just kind of stays there and we don't really support it. It's really important that we have both those pieces. So being a council member, it's important to pay attention to what's going on there, and we support both of those pieces.
Okay, environmentalists are raising concerns regarding the impacts of proposed large-scale commercial projects like the Honua Olaf Power Plant, also known to some people as Huhonua, the old name, and the Hawaiian Kingdom Brands Coffee Project. So the concern is what impacts they would have on Hawaii Island aquifers. Are you aware of how these projects will impact our freshwater resources?
Yes. The Huhonua one, I've been, you know, saying that we should not do it for a long time. I haven't been in a position really to make any decisions around it, but I do think that it was, and I'm hopeful that it's not going to happen the way it's been laid out. And I do think that, you know, burning trees for fuel is not a way to go. I know that, you know, at least one of the unions was very disappointed in my answer around this because they had some, some people in their union that were promised jobs or were actually already working for Huhonua. And I do feel bad for those workers. I think that they should be retrained and first in line for getting jobs. Hopefully, when that plant is repurposed for something useful that is also not going to be harmful for our environment. So and then the water, the water slash coffee bottling or coffee place that I think is now happening are up for discussion right now. I, yeah, I, you know, I don't really think it's a good idea for us to be mining our aquifers for these kind of projects in general. I don't, I haven't seen the studies on this one yet, so I don't really have the details. But overall, I would feel very cautious about wanting to see something like that go forward. But like I said, I haven't seen the details on it, so I'm not sure.
Thank you.
So county policy regarding hearings as well as board and commission meetings is reverting to pre-pandemic protocols requiring in-person attendance. Do you support this?
No. I'll tell you why. It kind of goes back to what I was saying before. One of the main reasons, or two things that we've already touched on, one is civic engagement. I think the ability to participate, especially on an island as large as ours, where people have varying amounts of resources, it's really important that we have ways for everybody to be involved regardless of, you know, if they have ability to travel halfway across the island or not. And the other one has to do with what I was talking about before, which is, you know, being a parent of young children, being a mom. And I think this is a huge issue. Those of us who have young children, mine are older now, but when you have young children, you can't necessarily do those things easily. But if you can get on a Zoom session, you can participate. And you don't have to leave your family for a few hours. You can just get on for 20 minutes to testify or something like that. So I actually think we need to go farther, which is, you're talking about county, and I understand. But I want to advocate for our state to be a little more flexible with how, not only how people testify or involve on the state level, but how island representatives from the neighbor islands especially are able to participate in meetings. I don't think they should be required to go to every single committee meeting and every single hearing and everything in person when we have perfectly good ways for people to participate without flying from island to island, having to leave their families for months at a time, burning extra fuel to fly back and forth. But also, it really limits the number of people and the types of people who can run for office. Like I was talking about with the county, but at the state level, I think it's even worse. It makes it very hard for anybody with young children who's not willing to take six months and go live in Honolulu to be able to try to run for office. And I think that that is not good for our community. I think we need better representation from parents, from younger people, from women. And we can't get that with the way things are currently set up.
Thank you. So now we're going to move on to fraud and waste with regards to the awarding and fulfillment of county contracts. Want to kind of test your knowledge, what measures are currently in place to prevent this sort of thing? Your familiarity with county government?
Yep. Well, one of the new things which I was super excited about is we have a new county auditor, Mr. Benner. And he put in place a fraud and waste hotline that can be totally anonymous. Anybody, if you work at the county, if you don't work at the county, if you see something happening that doesn't seem right, you can call, you can email, and you can let him know, let his office know that you see something that's just not right. And I really love this. I've been trying to let people know about this because not many people do know about it, get the word out there that this exists. I think it's extremely important because when I've been going around talking to people door-to-door in all these different neighborhoods within District Two, this is a serious issue. Fraud and waste and abuse, both in reality and in perception by the public, is really undermining the ability to trust government. And when we, we can see what happens on the national level, when we don't trust government at all, that our democracy is undermined. So I think it's extremely important that we have things to look at fraud, waste, and abuse. I know there are things like audits, things like that, that are very important as well. When we do audits, we can really see, you know, maybe things that we can't see at the surface level. And the other thing that audits often do is it gives us a little bit of a roadmap of where we can go to make things better. And sometimes as council members, you may know something's not working, a department's kind of maybe not going as well as we hope, but we might not really know where to start on making things better. But when you do an audit, you can right away see where the problem areas are, and you can start to look at ways to fix those. So those are two things that I think are really important. And the other thing is the sunshine law. I just, I think it's very good that the county abides by the sunshine law. It can be a little clunky and a little challenging sometimes when we want to collaborate more on getting good When we want to collaborate more on getting good legislation made and we have to. Put something forward to the whole uh council in maybe a. Version that's not very well uh formed with a lot of viewpoints in it because we haven't been able to um. Work with other council members on it, but I think overall it's super important and I wish the. State level government once again had a little more uh similar, you know, that they worked under the sunshine law too. I think it would really help and it would help us as far as when we want to collaborate with the state. If we could understand, you know, what's going on, sometimes we don't know behind the scenes, um luckily I have a lot of um friends and colleagues. At the state level, so I can often get some of the the background information. But um it's really important that we know what's going on, so um, yeah, I hope I answered your question.
Yes, you not only answered my question, but you uh went ahead and answered my follow up question. Which was uh would you be willing to institute formal mechanisms like anonymous hotlines and mailboxes?
Yes.
So uh I was very perceptive of you. And uh I'm gonna confess that we have run out of the scripted questions and now we're going to come to the improvisational.
Okay, sorry, like I said, I'm I'm a little uh. Uh overtaxed right now, but I'm I'm really happy to continue our conversations and sorry about the neighbor's dog.
Yeah, so uh Jeff, did you have any questions or Hannah, kind of free form questions?
Uh no, I may have a follow up question or two, it's uh Hannah, you ask your questions.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Okay.
We're all tired, I could tell.
I I definitely can improvise, so um one of the things, you know, we're seeing. Uh as you know, I work in Senator Casio's office and we're doing a lot of research into federal funding.
Yeah.
And I've been hearing lately, um especially from folks at the EPA. Who uh seems now they're gonna be taking the lead on this uh what they call the EJ forty initiative. Which is this idea that with this like huge bipartisan infrastructure law package and these trillions of dollars that are going out. That they want to see a percentage, forty percent, go to uh what they're calling disadvantaged communities. And so um with a lot of this funding. You need to either go through county government or a state government to access. There are small pools that are available like directly to non governmental organizations or whatever. But by and large, the money's gonna go to county and state and what we're being told is that the federal government. Um, you know, has come to this conclusion that the best thing to do with its money. Is to move it as closely as possible uh to the people that need it. So the idea is maybe they're gonna forego entirely, you know, or they're not going to prioritize sending money to state. Agencies that spend a lot of money on planning or whatever, but they're gonna look to get money to counties.
Mm hmm.
Um, maybe even smaller municipalities and directly to people, so with all that kind of setup and background. Um, I wonder, you know, what you see yourself doing if you get elected to help your community. Gain access to this federal funding um as a council person.
Yeah, great, great question, um and I've been trying to follow some of the federal funding as best I could, but thank you for that. Um, little bit of overview, um yeah, so there are so many things, um. And great news that we can bypass, we might be able to bypass the state on some of this because as you probably know. When the money, federal money does go to our state, um getting the money out to the neighbor islands is. Often very cumbersome and and it trickles in. Um, as opposed to what the lion's share ends up happening oftentimes staying in Honolulu where almost all the legislators. Live and um represent people, so um great news if we can get it directly to the county and even better if we can get it in the hands of some of the. Organizations that do the work every day, um I don't wanna see more plans, we know what to do in so many cases. We don't need more plans, we need to actually just um start doing the things we know to do, um for instance. We have a new, in in addition to our auditor, we have a new mass transit director in our county and he's been great at this. Instead of coming in and saying, I need to assess what needs to be done, I need to. You know, look and hear, what he did is he just looked on the shelf at all the plans that were already there and he just started taking. Things one at a time and just getting them done, not saying he has to reinvent the wheel or he needs to put his own stamp on it. But just taking them and getting them done. And so like for instance, for mass transit, I mean, it would be great if we can figure out ways to uh make our ma- mass transit. Both uh, I mean, right now it's free on our island, not just for um students, which is statewide now, public school students can. Um access mass transit for free, but on our la- our island, it's free for everybody, but our ridership is very low. Um, our routes don't necessarily go where we need them to go and they aren't as often as we need them in order to um ride well. So like one of the things that I have in mind is to start getting our. Population to ride mass transit more and then we can start building these routes and building where, you know, the um frequency of our buses. Is I think every uh public high school should have curriculum that includes their. High school students going out and riding the bus, um it can be a project, it could be a challenge, it could be. You know, whatever it is, it could just be an assignment, but I think that if our high school students learn to ride the bus, there's a new app. They learn to navigate the app, then their families will learn to do it and people will find that it's easy and um good to do, so. Then we can get more of that federal money into our mass transit and we can use that to improve the routes. Um, make them more frequent, go where you need to go, get more cars off the road, save people money. Um, because mass transit is way more affordable than owning and maintaining and filling with gas your own car. Um, so that's just like one example of something and I I do think that, you know, we might need to put some money into, you know, marketing. Mass transit and making sure that people, you know, know how to ride it and that it's safe and it's fun and it's, it's a good thing to do. Um, but we can do this and I think um. You know, it's a, that's a way of of taking federal dollars and and getting it to really help people who need it on our island. There are so many other um ways we can help, uh right now, you know, childcare, super expensive. And impossible to find for many families on our island. Um, if we can get federal dollars and they've included, you know, childcare as infrastructure money. Um, if we can get money for that, then I would like to see us really look at building the workforce, which is. One of the hugest issues around childcare right now, I know I've talked to the director at the YWCA. Which is like one of the only accredited childcare programs, so a very high quality program. They, she was telling me at one point recently that they had a classroom that's completely unused. Just because they can't find staff, they've got a waiting list of parents who need childcare, they've got a classroom. That's set up and ready to go, but they can't open it because they don't have staff. Now to me, that just is a no brainer, that we need to start investing and figuring out how to make sure that we have. Um childcare staff so that people can access childcare and, you know, go to work and their children can. Get the education they need at a young age, um trying to think of other examples. Um, but yeah, those are a couple off the top of my head, yeah.
Yeah, it's um, it's good to hear the ideas and um I appreciate that, but the question was more uh about. How to access the funding because uh when you talk to maybe some of the different department heads or the people in county. Uh a lot of the feedback you get is they feel they don't have the capacity to write the grants. Um, to manage them, to do the reporting and all of that, so um. If now there's gonna be this shift in this interest on the part of the federal government.
Right.
Get money directly to, you know, it's federal money, free money, well, not really free, it's.
That's right, we have to invest some to get that money.
Right, and you have to have the capacity to actually really uh deal with it, so.
Yeah.
You know, like what can the county do to build the capacity to be able to attract that money? And then put it to good use in the community.
Right, well.
Yes, that you shared.
Yeah, well, I don't know if it was, you know, I I do think somewhat foresight, but um. Luckily, the, in this last budget cycle, the county did put in the budget um six additional grant writer positions. Um, for the county, um it's, it wasn't determined at that time exactly which departments they were gonna sit in and I think so. Looking at um what types of funding is available, I think should uh help direct. Where those six grant writing positions sit based on the funds that we think can be pulled down. Um, but I was really happy to see that that did get passed, um. And I do think it's gonna be a step in the right direction for um making sure that we have the availability to. Um, write those grants and manage those grants, um. As far as, you know, how to get it in the hands of the right people, that is gonna be collaborating, obviously with our local. Uh organization partners, um you know, to me, I don't wanna see a lot of like necessarily. Uh new organizations springing up, I think we have a lot of organizations that are doing good work, um and maybe they need. Support in the way of money, maybe they need support in the way of guidance and um. More targeted work where we wanna see it go, but uh I would hate to see a lot of money be wasted on. Just kind of empire building and that kind of thing, I'd like to see it go to actual, you know, working with um. Helping people where they're at now, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, changing uh gears a little bit now, um I'm of course from the Hamakua District and we have a. Our concerns are a little bit different, but I think this does apply to the whole island.
Yeah.
Um, we have very limited resources in terms of land and water and protecting our oceans and there seem to be. Um, quite a number of overzealous developers out there. What would you do or what do you, what can you do as a council member to help protect our. Precious natural resources for future generations?
Yeah.
And to keep the, keep them from being exploited by the developers.
Yeah, very good question, I, you know, one of the things that I'd like to see. And um, you know, it's not gonna just be me being do this, but it would be me working with the other council members and convincing them that this would be a good thing. Um, but I think there there could be, this is a good time for this, is looking at how the housing authority currently um. Supports development on our island, um kinda right now, the way it works is. The housing authority kinda tries to clear things out of the way of developers so that they can just build things where they want. And they want more housing, so they're gonna do that, but I'd like to see a little more um. Investment in making sure that things are getting built where we, the community. The council, whoever, want to see it being built and how we want to see it being built. And that will take an investment in, you know, staffing, um I think we need to go from. You know, we have a just like one or two people that look at this right now as far as where things should be built, where our infrastructure should be built. So that it allows um developments to be built, to, you know, maybe we need ten people working on this. Um, to really make it um something that we're not just um. Helping with, but that we are part of, um and and that we have, you know. Invested a lot in, and I think right now, um it's unfortunate that. We're so um worried about affordable, building affordable housing that we just think, you know, clearing things out of the way and. Making permitting easy for developers is our most important thing we can do. I wanna see development happening in order to build affordable housing for our residents, not necessarily to see more housing built. For um tourists and off island investors, housing in my mind is for living in, not for investing in. Um, so I would like us to see, you know, how do we um make sure that with our efforts? And our, the way we use our dollars to build infrastructure, that we are putting it towards that end. And not towards the end of more um, you know, uh condos that are. Vacant for, you know, nine months out of the year or something like that. Um, so for me, I think we do need to invest a little more and we also need to, not just in money, but in. People, staffing and in our attention and, you know. I know the housing authority has kind of been, a lot of people have said, you know, let them do their jobs, hands off. But we see that there's been some issues there and I actually think that the council needs to be a little more involved in some oversight there and in. Directing uh where things need to go and I would hope the administration feels that way too, but I can't speak for them.
Kind of gets back to the role of the CDP action committees as well and how important it is to have the communities engaged. And help make those decisions as to what's right for their communities, I think that was a really terrible mistake on the part of Mayor Roth. And I think that um and and maybe you can express your opinion on the current planning. Department and possible more oversight needed over that particular department.
Yeah, well, I I I'm not gonna go too far down that, but um I will say that, you know. Uh, there are some specific pieces of legislation that the planning department has been working with us on. Others that I wanna see um, you know, worked on more and will need to work with the planning department on. There's some amazing people there, I also had a chance to um check in with um. Michael Yi, who was a planning director, um previous planning director and and uh really had a great conversation with him. I feel like, you know, there there are some obvious um places where we can improve. And um and we need to support the department to make those improvements as a council. Those are the things we can do, um but you can all, you know, the council can do so much. Uh as far as the departments, some of that is up, right now, the way it's structured is is up to the mayor. Um, so we can work as as much as we can and, well, you know, one of the things I think is super important as a council member is. Um requesting departments come to a council meeting and report on things or explain things. Because we don't really necessarily always have the uh ability to um question what's going on. But if we can make it a public forum where not only they're talking to us, but they're talking to the public and saying, hey, this is what's going on. I think that's a super important role as a council member to make sure that um. We don't just say, you know, even if departments wanna be left alone, their job is also to um. To report to the public and so we need to make sure and and they don't, they don't do that, they don't have to do that on their own, we need to, as council members, make that happen. So it's a really important job to make sure that we're um requesting that information into council. Um, so that the public and so that we can hear what's going on.
Thank you, Christine, Hannah?
Um, I'm curious, um you've been working now at the county council, not as a councilperson, but as a. I guess a legislative aide, is that your title?
Yeah, legislative assistant, yes.
Legislative assistant, and I'm really curious what you like most about that job.
Thanks, that's great, yeah, so, I mean, the the thing I like most is the coordinating, like constituent needs. And then um depart, talking to the departments and seeing what their issues are and what their abilities are. And kind of bringing those two things together to craft, you know, policy and legislation, of course, as a. You know, assistant, I am doing what my council member needs me to do and that's great and I, you know, a lot of what um. I wouldn't be working for Heather if I wasn't, if our values weren't aligned in in most cases. So a lot of those things I'm really happy to work on, but there are some other things that I wanna work on as well, um I think of it like this, like. So, you know, I work at the council during the day and then I've been canvassing and going door to door, talking to constituents. Like after work and. And then after that, I often take my dog Pepper for a little walk and that's when I kind of think about how I could. Maybe gel those two things together, what I'm learning at the council about how things work and what I'm hearing from people about their needs and their concerns. And how I, how those could be brought together to make policy going forward, so. Um, that's something I've really enjoyed about campaigning is being able to talk to so many different people and to constantly have those. New voices um on a regular basis, informing what I'm thinking about and how I'm thinking about policy going forward. So, that's.
Uh, that answer leads to a follow up question that um is gonna put you on the spot. And that is um, yeah, so you have a very close relationship with council uh person. Heather Kimball.
Yep.
And um, it's easy to imagine, you know, you two being joined at the hip there sort of, and you know. What about the possibility of um, something comes up and you don't exactly agree with her position? I mean, are we gonna see you voting against something that she's for or is that gonna be an issue?
For sure, yeah, no, that's a great question. Thank you for bringing that up. I would absolutely, if I do not believe that that's the right way to go. I would be happy to disagree um with Heather and and she knows that about me and sometimes we disagree in the office. But she is the boss in that case and she gets to make the call, um, but if I were a council member as well as her, then I would. You know, be making my own decisions based on uh my background, my um judgment of the the issue. Um, like I said, we share many values, we come at things in from very different backgrounds, mine's mostly, you know. Social services, advocacy, education background, hers is much more scientific, um, and so um. In that way, we we bring different things when we look at with different lenses to look at issues, um. So I do think sometimes uh we do disagree and that's okay and and that's good, um, and like I said, beca- especially because. Um, policy at the council is not often come perfectly uh ready to go to a council meeting or a committee meeting. Oftentimes amendments are needed, discussion is needed, and that's the only time we can really do that because of sunshine law. Um, I see disagreements very likely to happen, um, yes.
Thanks.
Okay, I think we're pretty much out of time now. Um, I want to thank you, Jennifer, for joining us today and. Really appreciate it. Also, thank you Hannah and Christine.
Yeah.
Um, if there's one thing I can encourage all of our viewers to do, it's to vote. Vote yourselves, ask your friends and family to vote as well. It's so important just to vote. At uh Huli High, I'm sorry, Huli Pack, we're building something that the Hawaii political establishment's never seen before, a slate of pono leaders. For more information, visit us at hulihi.com, H U L I H I dot com. Thanks again and have a great evening.
Thanks, guys, ahoyo.